And welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. This meeting is now called to order. So first I'll request staff to call roll for commissioners to see who is present and not.
Commissioner Harris has an absence tonight. Commissioner Heyman. Hi, all will be, oh, hold on one second. He's. He is here. He just texted me. I'm promoting him to panelist. Excellent. Commissioner Heyman, you made it for roll call. Sorry about that. It's probably connecting to audio.
Yep, I'm here. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Lubomirski.
Present.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Saudi.
Present.
Vice Chair Privatalli.
Here.
And Chair Samudhi.
I am here. Next, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Hearing none, next we'll move on to the meeting procedures. Due to the COVID-19 shelter in place order, we've had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair Samudhi. It, as I mentioned, at this time, other than commissioners, please keep your cameras off until it's your turn to present. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube viewers. YouTube viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling six six nine nine hundred. Nine one two eight and entering the meeting ID, which is eight seven two. Zero six four five. Four, four, three, five, and then the pound key. Or you can watch directly through Zoom using the link on the online agenda. If you are participating by telephone tonight and wish to provide comments when the public hearing opens, please dial star nine to raise your virtual hand. If you are here more live, you can just hit the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen, and I'll repeat that each time. And once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, if you're phoning in, you will dial star six to unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak, and we will have a timer up, and we will mute you after three minutes. So try to be concise. And if you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission. Closed captioning is available for this meeting, and the link is on YouTube. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Leslie. Let me now describe the meeting procedures. We'll first start with a staff report. Then we'll hear from the applicant. The applicant will keep their presentation to no more than 10 minutes. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. People on conference call can speak when they receive the notification that they've been asked to unmute themselves. And again, please keep your comments to three minutes. You will get muted if you, if you go over the three minutes. Then commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will then close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. So this time, anyone with urgent communication on a topic that is not on the agenda, you may address the commission at this time.
And again, if you're wishing to talk to, on something not on the agenda, use the raise the hand icon. I don't see anyone phoning in, but if you are, dial star nine. And it looks like no one wishes to comment.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, which has one item, and these are the minutes from September 28th, 2021. And this is for the approval of the San Rafael Planning Commission meeting, meeting minutes of September 28th. Recommended action being approved as submitted. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
Again, if you wish to speak on the consent calendar, dial star nine if you are phoning in. Use the raise the hand icon if you are not. That's found at the bottom of your screen. And there are no comments on the consent calendar.
Okay. Are there any comments or edits from any of the commissioners here? And if not, I would entertain a motion. Please announce yourself prior to the motion and the second.
Mr. Lubomirski moved to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Heyman, I'll second move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, let's move on to roll call. Staff, could you please conduct roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Harris is absent. Commissioner Heyman.
Hi.
Commissioner Lubomirski.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Privatalli.
Yes.
And Chair Samudhi.
Yes, for me. All right, so now let's move on to tonight's item for public hearing. And this is in reference to 800 Mission Avenue, the ages living San Rafael. Project planners, though, presenting this are Steve Stafford. And this is a request to amend a use permit and an environmental and design review permit approvals to allow an 11 foot, two inch increase in height for a previously approved senior assisted living and memory care facility on two vacant downtown parcels with 29,885 square feet of combined area. Amendment of the approvals would increase the height of the building from 36 feet to 47 feet, two inches, increase the resident count from 77 to 103 suites, and increase the bed count from 88 to 105 beds. The remainder of the approved site and building design would remain unchanged. The recommended action here is adopt the attached resolution, Exhibit 2, approving use permits, UP 21 006, and environmental and design review permit, ED 21 022, with conditions. At this point, I will request a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Samudhi and commissioners. So the, once again, this is the 800 Mission project. You may, this address may be familiar to the commission. It was approximately three years ago that the commission actually looked at this project as a slightly smaller project, one less floor. And they, they, they approved it, subject to some conditions. In general, you like the, the California Mission Revival design that is unique to this project. And so it now returns to you as a slightly larger project with an additional floor with a height bonus. There we go. So this is the, the appearance, this is a, I would say this is a perspective from across the street from the project at the apex of both Mission and Lincoln Avenue. So this would be taken approximately from the, actually, it looks like it's in the turn lane and the southbound turn lane on, on Lincoln Avenue. But it clearly shows a little bit of what's, the, the area of discussion tonight is the addition of this additional floor on the top. It started out significantly different. There were units that were around the, the clock tower, excuse me, the dome tower that have been removed, units along the Mission Avenue frontage and also some along the, the Lincoln Avenue frontage were pulled back at the recommendation of the Design Review Board. Thought a little bit more detailed discussion about the project history, just to remind the, the commission would be helpful. So once again, in September of 18 of 2018, the city council, they denied an appeal and upheld the planning commission's conditional approval of the implanting entitlements to allow the construction and operation of residential care facility, a very large residential care facility. Seventy-seven units, excuse me, 77 rooms and 88 beds with a floor of memory care services. They have garage parking and associated site improvements that include landscaping and drainage improvements over two adjacent downtown parcels. In February of this year, zoning administrator approved a time extension due to the economic uncertainty of the global pandemic. At that time, no changes were approved for the design. In March, the application came back, this time asking for a height bonus. 11 foot, two inch height bonus to allow for an increase in the memory care from one to two floors, while at the same time increasing the room count from 77 as approved to 103, and approve the bed count from 88 to 105. In addition, the project proposed to increase the affordable housing in Lufi from 500,000 to 600,000 as, as part of their community benefit that was required for the height bonus. In July of the summer, the application was deemed complete by staff. And then in August of this month of this, later this, the summer, Sign View Board looked at it actually on two separate occasions. We went through it a little bit. The board asked for further step backs of the top floor along the Mission Avenue elevation. They also asked that landscape plans be updated to show the landscaping design on all the outdoor terrace areas, particularly a new outdoor terrace area that was created on the fifth floor around the dome tower. And lastly, they, they recommended that the applicant explore providing greater articulation along the north elevation to reduce visual bulk. Once again, these were the recommendations of the board as they supported the project and let it move forward with the caveat that after the planning commission's review that they have, they want to look at the final review of the improvements that were made by, by the applicant. So the, the pro, the project plans that you see in front of you today incorporate the changes that were recommended by the boards, just the board hasn't seen them yet, and they would like to see them as a matter of courtesy before, one last time after the planning commission is, is done with their review. Once again, I thought it would be important to just review quickly the project description. It does request to amend the approvals on this project to allow for 11 foot, two inch height bonus, raising the height of the building to, from 36 feet to 47 feet and two inches. But both the general plan and the zoning ordinance allow for a 12 foot height bonus with a use permit when meeting their affordable housing requirements and by meeting the applicable design review criteria. As I've indicated, this additional height is to allow for increase in memory care services from one floor to two floors. Room count also would, would increase from 77 to 103 rooms, and then the bed counts would increase from 88 as approved to 105 beds. And lastly, once again, the applicant voluntarily increases, proposes to increase the affordable housing and Lufi from 500,000 to 600,000. These entitlements that are needed tonight would be both a use permit amendment to allow the residential care facility to operate on the site, but also now to allow for the requested height bonus. And then a design review permit would be necessary, once again, to allow for the design changes that were incorporated since the, the planning commission last reviewed and approved this, this project. Staff did receive a considerable amount of comments on this project. The, we've received to the date, from the moment this project was scheduled for hearings to this moment, we've received 65 public comments, which included 49 in opposition and 14 in support. There were several that were neither in support or in opposition, just making statements. Those comments in opposition generally thought that the building height was excessive. They also thought that the, some people thought the building required a comprehensive redesign. They did not like the, the Mission Revival design. And they were also highly concerned about the perceived parking traffic, water drought impacts as well. Those comments in support of the project believe that the height bonus continues to propose outstanding iconic building design and provides a significant contribution to the city's affordable housing in Lufi. Staff did want to provide some, some comments. After, after analysis, the height bonus proposal is allowed under the general plan based on its location, which is on the northeast corner, northwest corner, excuse me, of Lincoln and Mission. That is the location that a height bonus has been deemed allowed in the general plan. And by the amenity, they do allow it if, at this location, and if they comply with their affordable housing requirement. The project also meets the height bonus allowance in the zoning ordinance, which allows also for height bonuses based on the location of the site and the lot dimensions, including both lot width and lot area. Those are minimums, and there aren't a lot of locations on Lincoln Avenue in this neighborhood that would, that would meet both objectives. And also the amenity, once again, the zoning ordinance, it mirrors pretty much what the general plan says, which is again, location and amenity. Once again, the location is, the location of where this project is proposed, and also the amenity is based on what they're providing as an affordable housing in Lufi. Design Review Board recommended approval of design changes subject to further design changes, which have been incorporated in the plans that are before the board, excuse me, before the commission tonight. With also the caveat that final review, they'd like to see this one final time once the planning commission has concluded their review. Planning, city council action will be required after the planning commission's review. We're still looking for a determination, a determination by the planning commission this evening. However, since being deemed complete in July, this project was subject to several unforeseen delays by staff to bring the project to public hearing. Both the general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan have been adopted since then by the city council. Planning has determined that a number of approved and completed projects proposed for the downtown may not be in full compliance with the new general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan. Planning is, is proposing to grandfather these projects, including the proposed project from application of the general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan. And we're prepared to address this at the city council level by asking for an amendment adoption by the city council of an ordinance that would grandfather these projects deemed complete prior to the approval of the, of the general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan. And approval would be subject to the general plan and zoning ordinance, excuse me, zoning regs in effect at the time of adoption of the general plan 2040 and the, and the downtown precise plan, which was August 2nd of the summer. That concludes staff's summary presentation of this project. May I answer any questions of the commission?
Got a few questions.
Yes, Commissioner Primatali.
Yeah. You mentioned it's consistent with the 2040 general plan, but is it also consistent with the downtown precise plan?
It is. Doing an analysis on both the, the existing, excuse me, the, the previous general plan and zoning ordinance and the recently adopted general plan and downtown precise plan. It meets on nearly all standards. It does meet the general plan, it meets on most standards. To meet completely all the standards, it, it would require significant redesign of the project. And so as a matter of fairness, not only for this project, but also for many others that have been approved that have not obtained their building permit. We are moving forward with a proposal to, for a new ordinance that would grandfather these approved projects and completed projects that have been deemed complete or deemed or approved prior to the adoption of both the general plan, the new general plan and the new downtown precise plan.
Okay. And then, so follow up question regarding the downtown precise plan. Do you happen to know what some of the major differences between the proposed design and what would be proposed for the, the downtown precise plan would be?
Yes, there is specifically, there is a setback, a rear setback that would be an issue along that is along the Lincoln Avenue frontage. And more importantly, there is a prohibition to allowing driveways on frontages. Where in this case, this site essentially has two frontages, it has a street side frontage, but it also has a front, frontage, front setback. And it's got driveways on both. It has access, those driveways access, garage parking on both elevations. So that was going to be a significant, it's a unique design that was unique to this project originally, and it has remained that way. And to prohibit parking in a driveway would, would really significantly require a redesign for this project.
Okay. So the, the parking is inside the building, is that right? With entrances on, on two streets on Lincoln and Mission?
Correct, they're on garages, one, mostly they're underneath the building. The ones that's accessed along Mission is going to be directly underneath the building. The parking, the drive, parking that's located off of Lincoln is under the building, excuse me, under the building, but not necessarily subterranean like the, the one that's going to be, that is along Mission.
Okay, thanks. And then just continuing on that sort of same theme of transportation. I noticed in a lot of the public comments and a lot of the letters that the point was made that a traffics, a new traffic study may be useful, particularly because of the addition of the smart train. Are you familiar with that issue? And you, what do you think about that?
Well, I actually leave the, the, I've read both traffic studies, the original from, from, I think it was 2018, but then also the one that was amended recently, which is extensive. And Frank, it's written and created by traffic engineers. I actually, while I read the summaries and understand, I look for the bits of data that I need. The other 150 pages within a traffic study I leave actually to the traffic engineers. So this was sent off, this was sent off to our city engineer, who, traffic engineer reviewed the first iteration, the original traffic study and parking study. And I rely on their, their, their expertise. And they were satisfied with the original parking and traffic study, and then also the amended as well.
Okay. And did the amended take into consideration the smart train?
I, it, 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 it brought in that the close proximity to multiple multimodal public transportation. I can't say for a fact that it speaks completely of smart. I, I don't, I just remember it speaking of opportunities of multimodal public transit in the vicinity.
Okay. Yeah, I think the concern is that the smart train has created some. Okay, yeah, I think the concern is that the smart train has created some. Excessive traffic at times downtown in that particular area. So anyway, it's, it might be useful to ask for an update. To the traffic study based on the new traffic conditions caused by the smart train down there. What do you, what do you think?
Perhaps perhaps we could get staff engineer to speak to that. Or perhaps provide a follow up to that question.
Yeah, if that's the direction of the commission, I have no hesitation reaching out to the traffic engineer.
Okay, great. My next question is the the other. You know, one of the other primary issues that was brought up in the public comments and I am also concerned about is water, of course, and you know, I read in the. E I J that it seems like the pipeline that's planned for the. The bridge is going to be, I forget if it was sixty percent or forty percent, it's like, I think it was sixty percent of its original capacity. Yeah, unfortunately, and so. Yeah, is there a? I apologize, this is a larger issue than this particular project, but are projects in general being planned? To account for the possible scarcity of of water, particularly given that that plan, that plan's reduction in capacity for the pipeline?
Well, as you know, the drought is dynamic and it is changing constantly. So where we were at in March, when this was submitted. This was sent to Marin Municipal Water District, who provided an updated letter of support. That simply said that that additional water entitlement would need to be purchased from them. So they've since adopted an ordinance, probably several iterations of an ordinance. And it may, they may not be at the, they may continue to be doing so. How that's going to affect this project? I just know that the last one that I read is that they're they're prohibiting all landscaping from being installed currently, all new and and. Redone landscaping, so I that might be, I think this is an evolving dynamic that that. They have yet to say that, how I understand it, that they are excluding development. I think we would have to be quite concerned about that only because we've got. Rena numbers that we have to meet regardless of whether there's a drought or not, and we've explained that to Marin Municipal Water District is that. We don't get a pass from for arena numbers. And so it's vital, anything that's providing housing, residential, we've asked them to. Please look on it kindly when they're making determinations about what water rights will be given to who.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And then I just have one last question. So in some of the the public letters. It mentions that the DRB is not following its own guidelines? And is that possible? I mean, what's your opinion about that? Sounds like, you know, very aware of the guide, the guidelines and their request is to. You know, set back the the top story. Is that consistent with the guidelines?
Well, no, it 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 is within our. We have guidelines that that recommend that that upper floors be stepped back. And in this case, it was a incremental change that involved this project at the beginning. There was, I would say there was little. It was perceived step back with a belly band. It was a a different coloring, but it maybe was not a physical step back. So after two design review board meetings, we did receive, the project did receive some step back. And I can quickly go through them. They involved both an eight foot step back on the units that are along Mission. And then also to remove, completely remove a couple of units around the the dome tower. Which provided an opportunity to put in a new shared terrace area for the residents there. That would allow them to, almost like a roof terrace, but it would allow them to have. Allow them to be near the the dome tower. So by doing that, that also in effect provided a step back. So a step, I would say that. Through the two meetings, that the DRB felt like the step backs were appropriate. And then on top of that, they they also suggest, they they gave us suggestions, condition. They felt confident that staff would be able to work with the applicant to ensure. That their desires to have that upper floor step back were met. Staff believes that the eight foot step back along the Mission Avenue frontage elevation. In addition to the elimination of those units around the dome tower that is situated at the corner of Lincoln and Mission. Provide the step back that the that the design review board conditioned their support of this project for.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I have no further questions.
Steve, one quick question, is the, does the applicant intend to also present today?
Yes, Chair Shumuzi, yeah, definitely.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's have the applicant provide the presentation and then. We'll circle back and have the commission ask clarifying questions before going into the public comment.
Sounds good. I will, I will stop my share.
We have a screen of the presentation, Lori, or. I think it's coming up here. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, terrific, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stafford, for your staff report and your recommendation and thank you commissioners for your time this evening and your commitment. Presenting tonight will be me, Brian Ziegler with Aegis Senior Communities. And also George Signori, who's a principal with Anker Moisen Architects out of Portland, who designed the building and has done quite a bit of work for Aegis over the years. As noted in the staff report, we're requesting to amend our existing approval by adding one floor, resulting in a seventeen percent increase in beds from the previous approval. The new floor is completely dedicated to providing memory care as that's the most underserved population now and for the next several decades. The proposal provides four important contributions to the city of San Rafael. Care for seniors, the community will help meet the increasing demand for assisted living and memory care in San Rafael. Housing affordability, this development will contribute in about significantly in excess of the required affordable housing contribution requirements. Providing further benefit to the community. Economic vitality, the economic report prepared for this property demonstrates it will contribute meaningfully. To the vitality of the downtown and the health of the local housing market. And design excellence, Aegis San Rafael is a beautiful building. It will provide a visual energy to the character of the area. Just also, I understand, I've, this is my job, I'm the director of entitlements and I've done a number of urban projects in downtown areas. And whenever we do an infill project, especially one that's on a vacant lot in a urban area. It gets a lot of public attention and comment and that's completely expected and it's absolutely, it just shows you have a very vibrant and and. Committed community and I think that's great. And we've listened to the comments from the public, we've listened to the comments from the DRB, we've gone through a couple of meetings. With the DRB and we really, I think you're going to see in the presentation from George that we have done. I I think a remarkable job, I think the architect has done a remarkable job in settling this project into the site. And doing an exceptional job of de-emphasizing the areas of height and and. That handshake between the neighbors that's so important. Of course, it is bigger than the buildings that were built at the turn of the century, last century and forty years ago and that it's a, it it is, it it simply is. And then anytime you build on a vacant lot, you're going to block views, you're going to create some traffic that wasn't there before because it was vacant. But at the same time, I I think this is a going to be recognized as a wonderful addition to the. The city and people and future generations will look at this building with pride. The reason we're here tonight, as staff mentioned, our approval occurred just in advance of the global pandemic. And the realities of property development and of assisted living and healthcare services. Is that they've changed dramatically in the last couple of years. So has the zoning for the downtown. As a matter of fact, Steve had mentioned that, you know, this this has some, you know, areas of compliance that with the downtown precise plan. That were, that that such as setbacks and things that we wouldn't comply with the downtown precise plan as written. But I wanted to point out that the downtown precise plan allows, would require us to move the building closer to the property lines. Actually, it also required or it allows higher height. And so even though we're grandfathered, which sounds like we're getting something exceptional. What it does is allow us to proceed with a design that we've been working on for the last several years and have invested literally millions of dollars in. And not change that dramatically, but it's also a lesser scale and bulk and height. Than what we could do if this was a new application, a new applicant coming in, if this, if this doesn't work out, you know, that that. The new applicant would come in with something that would meet the 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 requirements of the downtown precise plan. And I guarantee they would try to maximize the development capacity of the site. And it would be more than this, just because this isn't allowed anywhere, especially the setbacks. So with that in mind. With the approval of this amendment that we we have tonight. We stand ready and able to move forward to providing this community to the center, this new residential community to the city of San Rafael. And most importantly, not only developing it, but we are the operator, we will be the owner and operator, we're a family owned business. And we want to be here for many decades to come as a neighbor and a and a community citizen in the city of San Rafael. So we don't look at this as a spec building that we're building and flipping. You'll, if you look at our website and you look at the buildings we've done. We take pride in fitting the buildings into the character and using high quality materials. And becoming a good neighbor with the community that we're in and and that's why you'll see with when George's presentation. That we went to the levels we did in the in the design. So for, you know, I think Steve's already gone through this, you know, we can get into math and everything, but we are compliant with the affordable housing contribution. We're more than compliant. As before, we came to the table and we said, you know, the requirement is three hundred some odd thousand dollars. We'll do five hundred, the same thing, we're taking that same rate and we're saying that compliance with the code is this amount. We're offering six hundred thousand dollars because we realize this is a bigger building, but we're fine with that. That's part of the community contribution that that we believe in. Next slide here. General plan compliance, you guys know your general plan better than anyone, but this is compliant with the general plan. The main theme here is we are compliant with the codes and the general plan. The only thing we're asking for here is the height bonus and we're giving the the affordable, the affordable housing contribution. The excellence in design and also the care for the seniors that so much needed in the community. Next slide. Economic benefits to the city and community, there is an economic study, I don't know if you got the chance to read it. It was amended, it was the same one that we presented before, it was updated. And what it essentially says is this community provides great economic vibrance and. Contribution to the neighborhood in which it sits. It also is a very unique housing product in that. It frees up, most of our residents come from the local community. So what happens is when they move into this community because it's more appropriate residential care setting for them. It opens up their home. The typical situation is someone moves out of their house because there's something like this available now. And that loosens up the local real estate market. And the economic report recognizes that and says this is a benefit for your health of your local housing market. Next slide. The building height, this is something that was a concern of the community. We are compliant with the city's zoning code. It's a complex code, they all are when it comes to height, especially on slopes and things, but it's been reviewed. It's a, it's had a lot of scrutiny and it is, it is compliant with the 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 city's height measurements. Next. And the context of the neighborhood, as you can see, if you look real hard. At this elevation that we've presented, you can see there's a red line that runs through this building. And that is the outline of the previous submittal. And so you can see it's very similar of the twenty eighteen submittal. And then you can see the house next to it, there's a real faint line there up on a mission, there's a the existing building. And it shows the relative proportion and you can see that real well in the elevation that's provided to the 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 top here. And we'll get into a little bit more of that, but how we tried to match the scale where the where the building meets the property. Trying to bring that scale down and the the character of the building so that there's a match with the building next to it. The parking was mentioned before, the analysis shows that we're providing forty spaces, we were acquired thirty one before. We're acquired thirty seven now, but those are both within the forty spaces that that we are providing. So in either of these scenarios, we're providing adequate parking. Next. And the traffic, this is something that. Our our communities don't gen, you know, we're actually a very low impact type of use for a for a community. And that our residents don't drive, so we're looking at staff, we're looking at visitors. And staff doesn't compete with peak hour traffic. Our staff changes are at six AM, two PM and ten PM. So we're not out there at eight AM, we're not there, you know, at five PM on the streets. And so we have, we're actually don't really compete too much for peak hour traffic. And again, the residents don't drive, so we're pretty darn low intensity when you compare us to an office. Or you compare us to a condo or an apartment building or retail, you know, we're we're one of the lowest generators of traffic by the I T E manual. That that you'll find out there. So typically, that's a positive on our side. Next slide. Outdoor spaces, there was some public comment about, and the direction from the DRB was about providing outdoor space. For the residents and frankly, we had to eliminate that in the last plan because it didn't pencil. I mean, the the economy and the the prices of construction have just gone crazy. And so that was one of the V E options and we didn't like it either. And by adding this floor, by taking advantage of what the city has provided as an incentive. We're now able to put that back in a really good location on the corner. And it will be used even more than a rooftop terrace was. This is something that's going to be on a living level, on the fifth level and it's going to be a very, I think, I think it's going to be an exciting space. And so we do have that back in, in the water, as you mentioned, we do have the will serve letter from the water district. And water is super important to us too, it helps with our, you know, we have to look at that as a cost and it's it's only getting more scarce. These new buildings are extremely resource efficient and so I think that, you know, it's it's essentially a Prius that we're building here. You know, it's not using the old fixtures and things, it's a, it's a very up to date and modern building serving, serving the population. And I wanted to clarify too, it's really important that what we're looking at is with this proposal tonight. We're not comparing it to the twenty eighteen because the twenty eighteen frankly, for us is not viable. We just can't build it. And so what I'd like to compare, if you're thinking about a comparison. Is compare it to a future project that another applicant would come in with that would be compliant with the downtown precise plan. Similar scale and bulk, they would probably try to maximize the site a little bit more. But I don't want to, I don't want to give the false impression that there's a choice to be made here between twenty eighteen and today. The choice is really between today and whatever a future applicant may come in with should, should this not prevail. And we certainly hope it does. So this is, I'm going to turn it over to George now, but again, we'll be around to answer questions and things. And I really do appreciate your consideration on this tonight.
Good evening, Commissioner Shumuzi, I will need about another five minutes, would that be okay? I understand we we might be right at about our time limit.
Yeah, Leslie, do we have the tower going?
I don't think we do, but so that's up to your discretion, Chair.
Yeah, just a, just a brief report, let's keep it quick.
Sure. So so thank you commissioners, as you've heard, this project has gone through several iterations over the past couple of years. I'd like to take a minute to thank Steve and. I'd like to take a minute to thank Steve and the design review board, uh, for helping to guide us, uh, to the place we are today. They provided us some pretty clear, consistent feedback encouraging us to maintain the rich design characteristics of the California Mission Revival Architecture, uh, while also being sensitive to the scale of the neighboring, uh, community. To, to this end, together, we worked hard to find opportunities where the building could pull back from the maximum developable volume allowed and focused on strategic ways to reduce the overall bulk and mass of the building, all this while still maintaining a beautiful and strong presence on this important corner. So in the next couple of slides, I, I thought it'd be good to take you quickly through a few, uh, key views of the project, highlighting some of the important design moves we made and the thinking behind them. This view from the corner of Mission and Lincoln lets us take in the overall composition. The primary element that immediately draws the eye in is this iconic Mission Revival Tower. To give it the appropriate visual prominence required, we did a few things. We brought the primary fo, uh, cornice line down, articulating the main four stories of the building. Along with this, we also sort of pumped up the scale of that cornice, creating a stronger, more definitive terminus at the top. The second thing we did was significantly reduce the top story footprint, pulling it back from the preliminary, the primary planes of the lower four stories. This top story is also rendered in a slightly darker tone of stucco to help it visually recede and break away from the main building. It also has a finer level of articulation with these wooden columns carrying the beams that support the projecting rafters along this more delicate eve line. At the tower itself, we pulled the top floor back even further, creating this large upper terrace, uh, that Steve mentioned earlier. Here residents will be able to gather outdoors, not only giving them a place to enjoy the sun, but this terrace also provides the passersby at the sidewalk level, uh, if they should look up with a bit of color and, and movement, the general visual interest that comes from seeing activity up on our rooftop. Historically, these, uh, towers would house the church bells. They served a visual and auditory purpose, but it was really more of an exterior experience. In this case, we've made it more accessible, allowing the residents to actually occupy the bell free and, and use it as a sort of covered outdoor room. Again, it's, it's sort of fun to be able to see people moving around in there. And lastly, but maybe most importantly, this view shows the roof terrace at this location does a great job of helping to break down the scale at this important corner. Next, I'll take you on a quick walk around the building. Next slide, Lori, please. As you approach the main entry on Mission, you can see the dramatic effect that that roof terrace has on the tower, really letting it break free from its surroundings. From here, you can also see how the top floor begins to fade away. At a zoomed in angle like this, you can start to appreciate the level of detail and architectural richness of all the elements. Next slide, please. This view approaching from the west on Mission shows how we've broken down the mass at this end of the building, uh, acknowledging the important relationship this building has with the neighbor to the west. The gable form here serves to terminate the building at this end and further reinforces the primary four story look of the building. To diminish the mass at this west facade, we've reduced the footprint at the top floor, effectively eroding the corners away. We've also articulated this facade with some traditional Mission Revival stucco ornamentation and introduced a trellis that will add some green softness at the center of this wall. Next slide, please. This view as you approach from Lincoln shows that we've taken a similar approach, being mindful of our relationship with this neighbor to the north. Here we've diminished the size of this corner tower and stepped this north wall back behind the tower, again, to reduce the mass of this facade facing the neighbor. Here we've also added a similar stucco ornamentation and trellis to the one on the west. Uh, next slide, please, Lori. Yeah, this floor plan illustrates how we were able to achieve some of that scale breakdown by significantly reducing the footprint of this top floor, setting it back along these two facades, carving out the corners and introducing the large roof terrace that will be open and accessible to all the residents. And next slide. And that will conclude our presentation. Thank you for listening, uh, and for giving us the opportunity to catch you up on what we've been doing. I'd also like to thank Aegis Living for giving us the opportunity to help them with this project. We really enjoy working with clients that plan to own and operate the buildings we design with them. They invest more in the quality of the construction. They invest more in the quality of materials. They invest more in the quality of design and in so doing, they invest more in the community. They become part of the community. They become your neighbors. So again, we'd like to thank Steve and the members of your design review board for their feedback. We feel this building will make a great addition to San Rafael and in the future, we anticipate that it will become another citywide landmark. Thank you again for your time and, and we look forward to answering any and all of your questions.
George, thank you. I, I just want to point out that Stephanie, uh, from Transport Group, the traffic engineer is also plugged into the call and maybe can answer that previous question about the transit.
Um, yes, that question about the smart train. The analysis does, uh, consider the smart train. We based our traffic forecasts consistent with the city's traffic forecasting. Um, and we've evaluated, uh, uh, existing conditions, but also of the future 2040 with build out of the general plan. And all of the analysis showed that we, the project does not have significant impacts. We did provide an updated analysis like Steve mentioned, um, with the current proposal to, um, to the city, and it was reviewed to demonstrate that the impacts would still be less than significant, uh, with, with the new proposed project.
So Commissioner Provotalli, a bit of background about that traffic study is how that works is Stephanie and Transport Group, they, they have trips generated from this project, which are then input into Department of Public Works and the traffic engineers' synchro model. So that synchro model has all of the existing conditions of, of, you know, dozens of intersections. And in our instance, um, DPW and the traffic engineer required us to study 19 key intersections, resulting in, in what Stephanie just explained, so.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
If, if I may, I, I do have a question about the traffic study. In the documents that, that I was looking through, I didn't see any reference to emergency vehicles. And it, it strikes me that a facility of this type may have somewhat regular, um, visits by emergency vehicles and, and that would be at all times of the day. How might that impact the, the traffic analysis?
I mean, emergency vehicles are somewhat unpredictable about when they would come if you're speaking of like an ambulance or something. So, uh, but they do have the sirens and, uh, to allow them to move about the street. And then the facility has, um, space to accommodate these types of vehicles.
Yes, Commissioner Headman, this was reviewed by FIRE, uh, both back in 2018 and this year, 2021. The Lincoln Avenue ground floor, uh, entrance and, and parking circulation area does accommodate ambulances. There's additional fire access, um, emergency access on the, on the Mission Avenue pullout. View someone's pull up sideline.
Okay, is, is there any data on how frequently such visits occur at a facility such as this?
Uh, can certainly, uh, get that, but it's, it's not significant to impact traffic patterns now.
Okay.
I have another question about water. I learned recently about the possibility of using what's called a, a purple, uh, piping or water system that uses non-potable water for things like toilets. And I'm just wondering if that may be feasible in the project in order to reduce the water demand.
Uh, we have looked into that in reviewing, you know, the water availability letter from September 9th from MMWD. Their requirement is for gray water and, you know, as Steve mentioned, their statement is that the proposed project will not impair the district's ability to continue to service this property. So that's, um, you know, a couple of days over one month ago now. But yes, we're, we're certainly looking into water conservation measures, uh, both for landscaping and for, uh, direct water supply.
Okay. And, and could you elaborate on the gray water system?
Uh, I would defer to our architect team for that, to be honest.
I'm not sure that we have a answer for that tonight unless you do, George. But the, that's a more of a mechanical, electrical plumbing. We didn't have those guys on tonight. I can guarantee you we're comply with whatever the, the codes are and I can guarantee those codes are very stringent these days. And so, uh, but whether, you know, with, what the gray water system is, I don't have a good answer for you tonight, uh, on that.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we, we have worked closely with, uh, building official Don Jepson on, on the prior iteration of this project and, you know, we are, we are meeting all the, I believe San Rafael adopts, uh, the Build It Green initiative in the state of California, which is equivalent to a lead silver or a lead green. Uh, so we, the, the project is on track for all water conservation measures.
We'd like to point out too, just, this is a unique building in that they don't have kitchens in the units. And so right there, everything is through a centralized kitchen, which I think arguably could be more efficient. Uh, you know, one dishwasher that's doing a very full load when it's doing, the washing machines are centralized. We don't have washers and dryers in the units, but that's done, uh, by a commercial laundry system when it's a very full load and we do use a, um, ozone type of a system that we don't have to use as much water and things like that. And those is our typical approach on that. Um, and so I think by nature, you know, I don't have the data in front of me, but I'm just going from instinct here. I think this use would probably stack up well against a similar, uh, you know, uh, hundred and, and five or, or unit or 103 unit condominium, for instance. It just, there's efficiencies in the way we operate.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I had, I had one quick question. Is this a, this amendment requests a necessity for the project to proceed? So if we, if, if this amendment is not approved, can this project proceed without it?
That's an easy answer and that, uh, it is, uh, it is a requirement.
So, okay, so it won't pencil without it?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
If no other commissioners have questions, I do have a few.
This is the time for questions.
Okay, one, one is, I was, I was surprised that the number of rooms increased by more than the number of beds. Uh, does that mean that some of the beds were taken out of the existing rooms?
Well, it's an interesting thing in that when we are, in the past, we have always applied for more beds than we have rooms, even though we don't even have a, you could build a studio or something and you could say, well, and this is advised by the state, licensing agencies have told us, get licensing for more than you think you'll need because it's really tough to go back and add them in the future if you ever need them. So that's just the way we've always operated. The reality is, is that we don't, um, we'd never go back and change a studio into a double, for instance. It just hasn't really happened. And so even though on the first round, we took that approach and we did what we always do, we realized that we don't need to do that and we can be licensed. Now we know what the building is and what the studios look like and what the, you know, the, the mix of one bedrooms and studios. We can tell how many beds will be in there and we're fine with it not changing. And so that's why this one's tighter. We're coming back and saying, um, we're okay without having that big gap that we have always done in the past, just in case. We don't need the licensing for that. So that's why it's different.
Okay, so it's unlikely that the number of beds will increase in the future?
We can't increase it beyond what we're licensed for. So that is your maximum, uh, on beds.
Okay. Understood. And I, I am an economist, so I, if you'll bear with me, I have a few questions about the economic impact analysis. So first, uh, in terms of the staff in the facility, is, is it correct that in the analysis, you're assuming that the staff, um, is entirely made up of residents of the city of San Rafael?
No, oh, go ahead. Jeff knows it more. I'll, I'll defer to Jeff.
No, it is not assumed.
Okay, then what proportion is, is assumed is from the city of San Rafael? Any?
Certainly. I mean, there is a large labor, labor pool to this project, you know, less than a mile to the east over in the Canadra district, in which, uh, a large population can walk or bike or commute in other ways to, to the community, so.
Okay. It, it, it appeared to me that a lot of the, the revenue effects were assuming that the staff was resident in, in the city.
Uh, the, the, the way it's worded is that residents, staff, visitors, vendors, et cetera, all utilize downtown in their economic spending. So, um, residents, meaning the adult, the adult children, who is the visitor takes their mother out to lunch at, um, Arizmendi, for example. That's, that's an economic benefit directly to downtown.
Okay. Um, and second with regard to staff, i- is, am I correct that the assumption is that the average salary among the staff will be 65,000?
I'm not sure of the number in the report that was done. It sounds about right in that we have a, we have about 40 different job titles in the building. All, you know, all the way from executive chef to general managers to marketing directors to care directors to, um, uh, you, you name it. We have janitorial, we have, uh, drivers for the van, we have care managers. It, it's a big diversity of staff. And one thing I would like to point out, not that it's reflected in the report, is that we have a very strong, uh, emphasis on promoting from within. We, we love taking staff, training them and moving up. It's a real opportunity for people to start at one position and move through our company and get training that we pay for and that we provide to advance in their careers. And so it's, uh, again, not that it's in the report, but it is a, it is a, uh, one of the best places to work by Glassdoor and that. And it's a, um, we, we definitely were a, we're a employee first company.
Yeah. Most of the evidence that I could find suggested that a lot of jobs in assisted living facilities are in the 15 to 25 dollar an hour range with administrators making in the 50 to 60,000 dollars?
Our administrators make over, um, our general managers are well over 150,000 a year. We have, you know, so we're in the higher hundreds, recognizing the locations we're in too. We, we're a premium provider in premium locations. Everyone has their niche in, in this, uh, industry. Aegis, if you look at our websites and things and you can see from our proposal, um, our niche is, is a more, um, you know, middle to upper end. We don't locate in communities that are, um, uh, that can't support, uh, the Aegis type facility. And so I think our, you know, our wages can reflect that, our, our location and, and our clientele.
Okay. Um, and, and a figure that, that really surprised me is that you, you expect 45% turnover every year?
Yeah, it's a.
And, and resi, in residents? I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's a, it is, uh, our, our niche again, uh, is higher acuity. We, and that's why we're adding a floor of memory care. That's a little high, when I say acuity, it's a little higher care level. And our typical residents are, uh, in their mid, upper 80s and they do need assistance with daily activities. So our average stay, average is, uh, about a little under two years, yeah, or so. And so that's who we, uh, who we cater to, folks that need assistance with daily activities.
Okay, and so, so that generates a, a lot of churn in the facility, um, which I think in the, in the impact analysis results in the freeing up of, of an awful lot of homes in San Rafael. And so am I right that you're assuming that 90%, nine out of 10 residents will be from the city of San Rafael?
It's about right. Our, our communities are, um, we, we have different communities, uh, like in, in our area in Seattle, which we've, uh, um, um, gone on a, a construction spree to try to meet the demands of, of this area. We'll have communities within a couple of miles of each other. And those communities are very distinct and the populations in them draw from that neighborhood. Um, they want to be in the neighborhood where their friends are and where their family is and where they're familiar with. And that's kind of our specialty and that's why we love this location is it's right in a great neighborhood in San Rafael. Yeah, and our now, and I was just told by Walter, our analysis is, I believe, a five-mile radius. But I think closer to the community you are, um, it, it becomes stronger, you know? So we're not pulling from twenty miles away, different towns typically. We do get that occasionally, but it really is for the community that it serves.
Okay, and, and I think finally, um, is, isn't it true that, that people go to an assisted facility, living facility when they need to? And not because the opportunity has arisen? Right? Which, which suggests that an awful lot of people in San Rafael who would move into your, your facility would have moved to an alternative assisted living facility in the absence of your facility, which would have led to a lot of the housing turnover that's in the analysis.
Well, the interesting thing is, is the demand, you know, we have analytics that we take a look at and see what the demand is. And for instance, we just opened up two new communities, one in Kirkland here and one in Bellevue. And they were about thirty-five percent rented, you know, they had thirty-five percent occupancy before they even opened. There's that kind of demand and from opening, we're up to about fifty to sixty percent in just a number of, of couple of months. And so the demand is certainly out there and I can't speak to why, you know, they didn't choose to go to a competitor if there's beds or if that is a fit for them. Um, but they did come to us and, and we, we are, like I say, it's a, um, and it's only getting stronger, you know, the, the demand. And so I, I don't think we're going to have an occupancy issue.
Oh, I'm, I'm not suggesting for a second that I think you'll have an occupancy issue. I'm only saying that I think that a lot of people in San Rafael who would go to your facility in its absence would have gone to a different facility. So we would have gotten the housing churn anyway. But, but, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Certainly. I mean, to Bri- to Brian's point, we do operate a community in, in Corner Madera, right there off Paradise Drive. That's, you know, operating with a waiting list right now. It's completely full. Um, and then per San Rafael's housing element, you know, there's over nine thousand seniors uh, within San Rafael and yet only eight hundred and ninety-nine beds provided for senior care. So less than ten percent of the senior population in San Rafael is served. Now there, there is likely a pent-up demand.
Understood. Thank you.
Do we have other questions from the commissioner? Okay, hearing none. I will now open the public hearing and I'll ask staff to open up public comments.
Um, yes, if you would like to speak on this item, raise your hand. Um, you'll have three minutes and if you're dialing in, please press star nine. And the first commenter is Nina Lilienthal. Nina, you have three minutes. So please unmute yourself.
Go off the camera, it goes right off again. So I'm just going to talk to you tonight. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you this evening. My name is Nina Lilienthal Murphy. I am the, I am a forty-year resident of San Rafael in the same house. I am the co-founder, past president and the current president of the Lincoln San Rafael Hill Neighborhood Association. Um, let's start with the height. Okay, the height of this, uh, development, first of all, um, the mission style revival, mission revival style is not befitting to the entrance of our neighborhood. It is not. It, I have not seen another mission style revival anywhere in San Rafael in my forty years. So that's a good start. And the height of this building just dwarfs everything around it. It is unacceptable. Um, it appears that the city is now encouraging high-profile buildings. I see four, four and five-story buildings going up all over the place. It's very scary. Um, are we trying to compete with Walnut Creek? I really hope not. Um, we moved to this place for a reason and it's a great city to live in. And we like our two and three-story neighborhood as it is, quite frankly. The location, going off the G E C O, um, report done by you, uh, said that the location, and I quote, "is highly unusual to have a senior living facility so close to the downtown area." Usually they're placed on the city's outskirts. And I agree, they shouldn't be close to the, this neighborhood at all. It doesn't belong here. It's oversized. It's just an eyesore to the whole area. Um, the traffic study is not complete. This project started in two thousand and seventeen, the same time the train started. Yet till in the May twenty, twenty-one report, it still refers to the train as the future train. Well, the freight train's been running for four years. Why haven't you included the train in your traffic study? And while we were talking, we were talking about commercial buildings going in and out of this facility. Laundry, food delivery, emergency services. And now I hear you have a ban. You're going to be taking people in and out of the facility. Um, and yet we have an Aegis, um, already one mile away as you head towards Terre Linda. Um, it's vital to this project that the city, uh, it's vital to this project that the city of San Rafael does a traffic study by a local and objective entity that knows the ins and outs of San Rafael. It's absolutely a necessity for us. Um, why are they not including the train? We're what, one and a half, we're one block from the train, one and a half blocks from the freeway. And yet we're not including all these other things. We're just doing a lot of fill-in work about the train study and nothing has really been, um, it's just a lot of fill in my eyes. I'm a professional interior designer. I get this.
Nina, if you can wrap up.
Before we get interrupted, okay? Uh, excuse me.
Nina, your three minutes is up. Thank you for your time.
My three minutes is up. Yes.
Um, next is, uh, Kay Karwetsky. Kay, uh, as a reminder, you'll have three minutes to talk.
I'm unmuted. So I also live in the San Rafael Hill Neighborhood Association, but I'm only two blocks away from that. But I don't know why everybody keeps saying we're in the downtown business district, although we might be across the street from it. The project is in our neighborhood and it's the entrance to our neighborhood. And it's, and I agree, it's too tall. And I also don't like that bell tower with so much open space. It just sticks up like a sore thumb to me. I have no idea if everybody agrees with that or not, but uh, those are my main comments and, and, um, we're just very concerned with the height of the building. Uh, and blocking neighborhoods and, and we know that the streets are going to get parked up because nobody wants to go down into a, a basement and look for parking and not find it. They're probably going to start on the streets. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Um, if there is anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
Yeah, I remember.
Um, please raise your hand with the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are phoning in, please dial star nine. So the next one to speak is Anna Debbie. Uh, Anna Debbie, um, excuse me if I heard name wrong. You have three minutes.
Hi, um, hi, I'm Anna De Benedictus. I didn't type in my full name for some reason. Um, I live like kitty corner to the area where this, um, will be developed. Um, and I'm really excited about it. I think the design, um, seems really well thought out. Um, I'm really excited that there's going to be outdoor space for elders. Uh, I think that's really important. Um, I'm not worried about the height since the building right behind it is pretty tall. It's like, especially from the drawings, looks about the same. Um, I would really like there to be like more garden space, but I know that the designs are like, it's been three years and it's been pretty well done. Um, but yeah, I would just be excited to have something that like brings community in, like gardening with elders that are there and, um, having interaction. Um, but otherwise, yeah, I just wanted to support the fact that affordable housing is being planned and thought about. Um, it's really hard to live here. It's really expensive. Um, I'm twenty-something and work locally, um, and feel really privileged to live around here. Um, and yeah, I would love to figure out a way to get involved more and know how the community can come together and kind of embrace elders within our society. Cause they're lovely. I love watching them walk by. It's wonderful. Um, uh, yeah, and that's, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Anna. Um, there's anyone else who wishes to speak?
I'm muted again. That was terrifying.
Oh wait, I have it. Hold on one sec. Um, please raise your hand with the raise your hand icon or if you're dialing in, star nine. Let's give it a second. I don't see that anyone else wishes to speak.
Sorry, I was on mute. Okay, with, uh, no other public comments at this point, I will close the public hearing and we'll bring the discussion back to the commissioners. Um, so I think, uh, at this point, what we can do is I'll start by calling on each commissioner for comments and then we'll bring it back to an open, broader discussion. I think this is a pretty meaty resolution, so want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak before we kind of dive into um, our thoughts about potential motions, et cetera. Um, so I'll just go down the, the list. Uh, I believe Commissioner Harris is not here today, so, uh, start with Commissioner Haberman.
Um, so at, at this point, I, I want to express some concerns, um, with regard, regard to traffic flow. It turns out I, I travel through that intersection at least twice a day. Um, and it, it's a pretty busy intersection. Um, I'm worried about the parking situation. Um, there are, uh, in, in the event that ten residents have family visiting, um, there are insufficient parking spaces and parking is extremely limited in the neighborhood. Um, also have some, some reservations about the economic impact analysis, but I'll share those a little bit later.
Makes sense. Commissioner Lubomirski?
Um, I, broader sense, I, I think it's a handsome-looking building. I think, uh, the, DRB did a good job, kind of from what they first got to what was, uh, shown tonight. I have real concerns about the height of the building. I mean, it's hard. I still don't have a really good idea of its relative height compared to the neighboring building. From the angle, street angle, I would like to have seen an elevation, a true elevation, drawing an elevation in the height, but, um, I, I, traffic, shoot, if we were serious about traffic, we would have elevated smart. Okay, that's, that's what I say. If we, if it was elevated, we'd have problems with buses, would be gone. And so that's on us for allowing smart to go through because, I mean, I drive home in the afternoon and the traffic is right onto the freeway. So that has nothing to do with this project at all. Um, I, I, we need it. I mean, apparently our community is aging and it'd be nice to take care of our own, uh, in San Rafael. So I think the project itself is, is, is needed, um, just like the one up in, um, Terre Linda that was, uh, just completed. Um, we, we need it, but again, I, I'm concerned about elevation. But as I understand it, there's no project without this, um, uh, this allowance. So that's all I got for now.
Commissioner Mercado?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I want to thank Steve and, and staff and the applicant team for coming back. I was, I was on the commission when this came the first time, so I remember having a lot of interesting conversations. And I was torn then by this idea. I think you've presented well in explaining there's a need in the community. I think as a commission, we're struggling with the bulk and mass, the height impact and sort of the, the gateway component of the site. I actually think it's, it's aesthetically very attractive and I thought the team did a good job on that. I'm also concerned just a little bit about, this really isn't sort of a, a housing project from the sense of creating an integrated community. You know, these, as you were saying, and, and, or at least as I've been hearing, these are more sort of higher-end units. And I see this almost being like a small community within itself. Um, you know, with having the luxury of the working class on the other side of the freeway who can come in, do their job and then leave. Um, so that, that doesn't sit well with me. Cause unlike maybe a traditional housing project that would have an affordable housing component, this doesn't seem to have that. So I appreciate the increase in the, in lieu, but does that really do anything for our housing stock? Um, I like the idea conversely to that, that no, this will help open up those single-family homes and maybe other, other locations. So that, that's the upside. So bottom line is I'm still teetering back and forth. I don't like sort of the, it's all in or no in kind of situation. The current, the layout right now of a vacant lot just really needs to get worked on. So I like to hear from other commissioners, how everyone else is feeling about this a little bit. I appreciate all of the public comment. Um, you know, I think there is a little bit of this hybrid issue here. It's in downtown, but it's also in this neighborhood. So again, I'm still a bit torn, but, um, you know, I, I want to hear the other commissioners' input.
Makes sense. Commissioner Saudi?
Yeah, hi. Um, I actually was on the DRB when it first got brought forth. So I remember way back, um, looking at this building. At, at that time I was in support of the building. Um, I'm in support of the project right now. I think, um, similar to the other commissioners, I, I do have some concerns. Um, I teeter between knowing that in terms of a sustainable, um, large project on the site, um, it's probably as good as we can get because, you know, as discussed, um, we have a really dense, um, we have a dense site, um, in terms of like amount of beds, you know, per square foot or lot coverage, sorry, lot area. Um, we know that they're going to be, um, you know, they're economically driven. So I think, you know, having like water, laundry and cooking and all that stuff, um, really centralized and figuring out how to do it, um, with as least resources as possible is, is probably advantageous. And our current codes are written in such a way that, um, they do have to, um, meet some pretty strict guidelines. Um, I really don't have a problem with the height, especially with the step back. I think in true elevation, you would never experience it that way. I also think because Lincoln Hill goes up at that point, it doesn't really sit as, um, as proud as it would otherwise. And I, I do like the fact that there's gardens and, um, like an arcade-looking portion on the front of the building. And I think, um, Incro-Moison did a good job of, um, articulating the facade in such a way that, um, like other buildings, we really don't see in downtown as much. Um, I don't really have, um, traffic concerns. I think Commissioner Lubomirski said, like, we have other concerns about traffic, but I do agree that, that this site will be developed at a certain point. And, um, if we have this as like, essentially end-of-life care, I can't imagine, I can't imagine like a lower use case for parking, I guess, in traffic. Um, I, I kind of like from a social impact, I agree, this is like definitely, um, a facility that only a few people can afford. And, um, it will definitely, you know, open up housing stock. And it would be great to see more affordable housing that we need. Um, but I think this will help, this, this will help our Rena numbers, so on paper. It would be good. So I think generally I'm in support of it. Um, I can't really pinpoint why I don't like something about it. It doesn't feel awesome, but, um, I think it's going to be a really great addition to that neighborhood and we need that site to be addressed. It's just an open lot and I think it'll actually, um, really impact, um, you know, have a positive impact in the neighborhood around that site. And hopefully kind of, um, make that area feel a little more welcoming. And, um, I just moved my mom up from Southern California, so I know how hard it is to get, um, elderly people into, um, housing and I, she really wanted, she came from. elderly people into, um, housing. And I, she really wanted, she came from the retirement community and it was really hard for me to find one up here. I don't think this is, is affordable as most, but, um, I do know that there's a need. So, um, you know, I'm glad that we're, we're, we're actually kind of addressing more senior housing in, in the area.
Thanks. Makes sense. Uh, Vice Chair Privatoli?
Yeah, this is another very complicated one, obviously. Um, uh, on a personal level, I have recently, uh, I recently put my mother into an elder care facility. So we've got a lot of bids. So, and including from Aegis and Aptos. And, uh, I can confirm that Aegis is definitely on the higher end is the most, I believe, the most expensive facility that we looked at. We wound up, um, finding one that was, um, about half the price, um, which is, which was sufficient. So this is, you know, as has been mentioned, it's for a, a pretty, um, a very wealthy clientele. Uh, so I wish that we had a facility that would provide, um, elder care to, um, a larger portion of the population. Or, uh, housing, uh, that includes an affordable housing component. I actually like the aesthetic of the building. I know it's controversial, but I feel like it is consistent with the style of San Rafael, particularly the mission. And, uh, so I think that the architects have done a great job. Uh, I actually attended the last, uh, DRB meeting where this was addressed um, as the, um, planning commission representative. And I know that you, um, that the architects really were, um, asked, were taken to task about, uh, making some improvements, uh, in order to allow for the setbacks to, um, you know, basically conform to the, uh, the desires of the DRB. And, um, what else can I tell you? I, I am also concerned about the, the height though and, uh, the massing. And, um, you know, as a, an appointed official who really represents the community, I'm gonna have a hard time voting yes to, uh, approve the additional height. Um, I think that it would be a much easier solution if we could go with the previous design and somehow, uh, make the budget work. Yeah, I have to say I, I'm very torn with this, but there really has been a massive, um, voice of opposition in the community about just this additional eleven feet or whatever it is. So I feel like I'm going to, um, I, I think just as a, as I mentioned, as a representative of, of the community, I'm gonna have to side with the majority of the community. With regard to traffic, the, uh, I, I agree that, you know, the traffic situation is not good downtown and, and, uh, but the point that was made about the shifts being at six AM and I think two PM and, and, and 10 PM. Uh, I, I don't think that there's going to be a large traffic impact and, um, you know, there's hopefully going to be sufficient street parking, if not right next to the facility, uh, nearby or at public, um, lots in downtown. So yeah, I, I'm not super concerned about traffic. Uh, the fact that it's close to downtown, I love that idea. I, I think it's great to have more seniors integrated in the community. The idea of putting, uh, senior living facilities on the outskirts of town and sort of like isolating seniors from the community, I feel like is a it's an antiquated idea that we need to, um, we need to, uh, try to turn around. I feel like seniors should definitely be more integrated in the community. So I actually like the idea of having it be close to downtown. So I guess in summary, I'm just wondering, I'm hoping that, you know, the previous design with the lower, the lower height and, uh, the lack of the additional floor will still pencil for you. And, um, we can still see the, um, the facility at that location with that lower height.
Thank you. Yeah, makes sense. So let me just summarize the key concerns that I heard sort of reflected across, um, all the commissioners. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure that I'm gonna leave some out, but these are the high level themes that I've heard. First being the concern around sort of the, the, the true economic impacts, like what the, what the actual contribution is to housing as well as somewhat of an affordability, um, sort of component there about sort of a, a desire for, for greater sense of affordability. Second major concern being parking, less so traffic. I think we're, we seem to be all in agreement about the, the traffic not really being their problem since the traffic is what it is. And I think relative to other uses, this is probably the lowest impacts you could possibly have for this level of density. Uh, third concern that I've heard is around the height and massing and sort of really digging into um, why this additional, was it eleven feet? Uh, eleven feet, two inches, um, is actually, uh, essential for the project and why and really getting into why I wouldn't pencil for, um, the originally planned height. Uh, and then the last is sort of, uh, voice of community, community opposition. Um, and, um, sort of to what extent, um, that is sort of meaningful or to what extent the, the concerns that have been voiced are valid with regards to the, the experts, the expert feedback and studies that have already been done. So I think those are the four that, that we've heard. So the res- resolution as, as it stands, as I mentioned, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory is that, um, we are looking to allow for an eleven foot, two inch increase in the height. So we're going from thirty six feet to forty seven feet, two inches, as well as an increase in the number of rooms. We're going from seventy seven to a hundred and three. So we're increasing by twenty six rooms and increasing the number of beds from eighty eight to one hundred and five. I, let's see, the garage parking spaces, um, Leslie or Steve, can, can you confirm here? It's the same number of garage parking spaces or is this an increase in garage parking spaces?
No, they're, they're, they were approved with forty garage parking spaces. They will continue to propose forty parking spaces. Previously, uh, the lower design of this project and they were, the traffic study had identified that there was a demand of thirty one spaces. Now with the additional height, the demand would move up to thirty seven spaces.
Okay. Um, and then just to one question for me to, to the applicants is that these forty spaces, this is inclusive of spaces for family members or visitors as well as staff? Is that correct? Or is it just parking spaces for staff?
Uh, that, that parking demand accounts for staff, any residents who may drive, which are very few, as well as vendors and visitors. Yes.
Okay.
And how many, um, how many staff members do we have? Building?
Uh, it varies per shift, but the peak will be, I believe, thirty three. And, uh, as noted in the parking and, and traffic analysis, you know, as well as all of us know very well, this, this site is very well positioned for utilization of public transportation, whether it's smart train, the bus line, uh, numerous bike routes, north, south, east, west. Um, so there is kind of a qualitative assessment that, you know, so these, these traffic and parking rates are, are nationally accepted figures. So that's as we just discussed, that may be a very suburban community on the, on the outskirts of town where public transportation and or bike transit is not, is not feasible to some of the staff members. So there's a, kind of a qualitative assessment that uh, the parking and or the traffic impacts may be less than stated by these national rates.
Okay.
We also incentivize staff to, uh, take modes other than, uh, a car. So.
Yeah, there is a transportation management plan that was approved by San Rafael planning staff and department of public works in twenty eighteen that um, Aegis does provide financial incentive to our employees to utilize public transit.
Quick question. Is, is there a bike rack in the garage?
Yes. And per Ms. K. Karchewski, there is an electric bike charger. That was her request in twenty eighteen.
Okay.
I just want to emphasize too that there, I mean, there is not a viable option for us to deal with the lower building. That's why we're here.
Um, I don't need to interrupt, but this is a time for questions and answers. So please only speak if you're asked a question. Thank you.
So just going, just going back to this, this, um, and I'm jumping around for the key concerns, but I just wanted to, I didn't ask my questions a little bit earlier. Just kind of doing some scenario planning here. It's, um, I, I, I don't know what's, what's a realistic number to, to kind of anticipate, like how effective these, um, these, uh, public transportation incentives would look like. But if you're targeting, you know, thirty three of the forty uh, would be essentially used by staff. I don't know. Is it like a, a ten percent reduction in, in that? I'm just throwing that number out there, but sort of thinking about it from a visitor perspective, I would, I would assume just given the demographics of the, um, of the residents, that zero percent of family visiting would be using public transportation, that they would all be driving. So I guess then the question is, because I'm, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with, um, with senior living facilities and kind of the the sort of visitation patterns, et cetera. But let's say, for example, on a Thanksgiving or something like, I don't know, families go back for Thanksgiving or families visit. But I can imagine that, um, during some particularly high traffic periods, if you have, you know, a hundred and, a hundred and three, um, a hundred and three residents, let, let's say you have full capacity, a hundred and three residents, that you'd have more than seventeen, or not one seventeen, more than seven rather, cars coming to visit them. In which case there would be, you know, potentially some spillover. Now I know that, you know, you know, there's part of it is, 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 uh, street parking, et cetera. But, um, you know, what, what thoughts do you have around? You know, those high traffic periods, um, not so much from the standpoint of traffic for the city, but more so in terms of parking, um, in excess of the, of the seven spots essentially that are available to, to visitors.
Typically our visitors come at, you know, we have looked at this, we've audited our sites and when visitors actually come out, it's usually after dinnertime or they'll come in and the other thing is they don't come for a whole long time. Maybe it's twenty, twenty-five minutes or so. It's not like they're spending long time. They're just popping in and just, you know, see mom or so. It's usually non-peak hour because they usually go home, they have dinner with their family or something. They come, you know, to the community and, and hang out. So it's evenings, it's weekends is the typical visitor time. Um, when we do have special events, uh, you know, occasion, most of the time for holidays and things, family comes and picks up their, their loved one or someone goes home if they're gonna do that, or there is some visitation. We don't really, uh, you know, find that as a, uh, uh, too much of a, uh, problem in our, our communities. Cause we can anticipate that and we tell staff, hey, there's gonna be a little bit of a surge or so on this particular day, you know, make sure you carpool or whatever if they need to, if that's, as an issue. We have urban sites all over the place with less parking than this on per ratio. And, and it works. Um, and, and parking's, you know, every site we do, uh, parking is an issue, you know, as far as that's just because that's development today. It's, uh, it's urban. And so if we were to do a condo or anything, we'd be having the same conversation. Um, one, one thing that we do is when we do special events, say that we hold a Mother's Day weekend or something like that, we'll plan for that and we'll have, um, offsite parking and things. And we'll say arrive at this time and, and come and we have the van and things and we can take people back and forth. And so what we do and, and and we've even had valet service at one of our events when it's a surge, because we can anticipate that. And, you know, so we can accommodate, um, but just regular visitors and things. It's really a non-peak event. They're popping by in the evenings, weekends. And the other thing is about the engagement with the community, this, we do have, uh, rooms and things. We have speakers that come and speak and we invite the community and we don't want to be an isolated community. We're a community where we engage people and we invite the public in. We're not, we're not trying to create a barrier, an us them type barrier. These buildings get used, uh, my wife runs a nonprofit for the humanities. She uses these buildings for children's reading programs and things that they have. And they had World War Two veterans talk about courage, you know, to kids and things. And it's, it's, it's a neat, it, it is a community aspect. I don't want to make this sound.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be limited to the answer.
I'm just pretty excited about it.
I know. That's awesome. Thank you.
So, so going into these, um, to these four themes, um, that I, that I mentioned, I know that Commissioner Haberman, you mentioned that you had some additional sort of economic thoughts around that. I'd be interested to hear, um, your, your take on that.
Sure. Um, so in, in the economic impact analysis, um, I, I believe, uh, the sort of the bottom line number is about twenty-five million dollars um, in added revenue, uh, to, to city businesses. And a, a non-trivial part of that stems from, uh, the staff, uh, who it, it, you know, in the analysis makes a significant contribution to that twenty-five million, which necessitates that many of them live in the city of San Rafael. And, you know, partly given the nature of the facility, um, it's not all that clear to me that they will. Um, you know, I'd sort of like to know, uh, the, the Terre Linda facility, what proportion of their staff actually live in San Rafael. And as that number goes down, so too does the economic benefit. I, I think that there is some economic benefit associated with, you know, uh, kids coming to take mom or dad out to lunch. Um, but my experience and my mother's been in a assisted living facility for about ten years. Um, my experience is that that doesn't happen.
I can tell you that what we do is we'll order, uh, seventy-five pizzas at a time from local pizza guy. Um, we'll order cupcakes.
This is, uh, a high-end facility. I'm sorry, uh, am I better now?
Yes.
Yeah. Second period.
Okay, this, this is a high-end facility. And so I wonder how accessible it is to um, the nine thousand potential occupants in the city of San Rafael. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm left with, with the belief that, that, uh, many of the residents, uh, a significant proportion of the residents will come from outside of San Rafael. Um, and that those from in, in the city, uh, who need assisted living facilities will, as they would have to in the absence of this facility, end up going elsewhere. Um, so the twenty-five million dollars, one, one second please. The, the twenty-five million dollars, I think vastly overstates the, the economic impact. Um, and, and the city can go forward with this, but I think it's important to understand that.
I'm just curious though, what i- i- it's a criteria that's very unusual because if I build condominiums here, they're not going to be affordable condominiums, you know, in the eyes of, yeah, and to say that, that our residents, because they can afford care at our facility, somehow that's a negative. It's a ding against the facility.
I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm, sir, I'm not saying that at all.
But I'm hearing that.
Well, uh, uh, all I'm saying is that it may not be, I'm, I'm not making any statement about affordable housing. But I'm making a statement about what my, my priors, uh, for a lot of the senior residents in San Rafael. Um, and that they are not necessarily in high income categories. And so this facility may not be accessible to many of them. And that's, that's not a knock on the facility. It merely has implications for the economic impact, uh, that your facility will have on the city of San Rafael.
So, so maybe, maybe one thing that you could do, um, to, this is to the applicant, to kind of address the, the concern or sort of the, the, the thought here is in your market research, I know that you, you, I think it was Jeff who had, who had to kind of talk through the the high level numbers around, um, sort of potential demand and what, what the current demand fulfillment is. Um, do you, do you have additional data? I think it was presented, I think either maybe it was Steve's staff report. Or something like, what is it? Currently twenties, twenty-six percent, I believe, of the city population are, are elderly and by twenty thirty, that's going to be thirty-four percent.
Yeah.
So I mean,
I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
So, so I think if those, if I had those numbers correct, um, you know, given, given ages pricing, um, and given what information that you have about, say, income and sort of income breakdowns across the communities, particularly by age of head of household, you know, what can you say about like even the capacity from a, from an income perspective? What percent of say this third twenty-six percent or thirty-four percent would be able to, because I mean, we're talking about a hundred and something beds, forty-five percent. about a hundred and something beds, forty-five percent turnover per year, which is a, what, a two-year average stay. Um, so I mean, we can do some quick consultant maths and really see if like, you know, not only is it the total population of elderly, but it's also the population of elderly that can afford either themselves or via family, um, to stay there, to see if we can actually address that question.
Right. Why is this a question? I mean, this is some, I've never had this line of questioning before. The social engineering aspect of it is, is, it's nowhere in your code that you're telling somebody they have to have a quota of certain incomes to get approval for a building in the city of San Rafael.
I'm gonna hold on a second. If I can interrupt for a second, um, I'm, I'm wondering about this line of questioning as well. And Steve, if you can, please let us know if there is an economic, um, kind of social economic finding that the planning commission needs to make in order to approve this project. And I understand the discomfort, but I do want to focus, um, I, I do, I hear and I understand the discomfort with kind of the discrepancy of building a, um, kind of a wealthier community, uh, served by folks who are not really making that much money. But I do want to see what the, what the findings are and if this is one of the findings. Um, and, because I know the use is one that is approved and we do not, you know, divide uses by, you know, those that are market rate and those that are below market. So Steve, if you can answer that question, I think it might.
So before Steve, Steve, before you answer the question, my, my read on this line of questioning, A, just to kind of set, set the tone here, is that I don't believe that this line of questioning is related to this being derogatory against the project. I think that this line of questioning, again, if you're, if you recall the four key areas of concerns that were raised, uh, across sort of thematically by the commission, um, one is just understanding the potential economic impact and benefit to the community. And two, it's also addressing community opposition. So think of this, I'm saying this to the applicant as a piece of advice, think of this line of questioning as your opportunity to represent your case to the community, to demonstrate the benefit. Don't see this as antagonistic or an attack on the, on the credibility or the worthiness of the project. We're trying to help.
Yeah. Can I, can I add something here?
Sure.
I, I think that, um, to bring up, to answer the applicant and Leslie's answer, I think the discomfort isn't with, it's, it's for, um, higher income, um, residents and that it's a lower in community. I think it's the way it's sold. Like, I think what, the things that are written in the report may not reflect what's actually happening. And I think that we, um, or at least I can speak for myself. I feel like there's a, you know, in the presentation, I, I think it doesn't really, um, it doesn't really address the expertise that are on the commission, you know, having Commissioner Haveman, having, um, the commissioners that, you know, this is our, this is our livelihood. Like, I spent a lot of time getting, um, entitlements approved. So I think we all know how, you know, the economics of the project. I think we all understand the impacts of the project. Um, you know, we just want to be, we, we just want to hear it clearly from you guys. Like, I, I actually think it's a good project. I don't have a problem with the project. I just don't, you know, I just want to feel like I'm being told straight, and I think that's what the community wants. So, I mean, from my perspective, that's where my discomfort comes from.
That, that's well put. Thank you.
So back to, back to Steve. Yeah.
Okay, uh, to answer Leslie's, uh, question and, and, uh, just to hopefully frame this in, or at least take this out of the frame, is that, uh, both the use permit amendment and the design review amendment are based on findings, findings of fact. And there really isn't any finding that asks for quantifiable, uh, economics at all. There's no economic benefit. The only economics involved is for the height bonus. And for the height bonus, there are a number of things that the planning commission should look at. One being, uh, did the design review board find that the, the design of the building, as its increased height, didn't meet the design criteria, the applicable design criteria? I believe it's progressed to, to you with an affirmative on that. I believe that's what they did. They gave, um, they gave direction, they gave direction to staff and, but they wanted also to see it come back around. They wanted to see what the final design product was, since they haven't seen, uh, the, the plan in front of you. It is also based on, on the location, which is, once again, this is, uh, essentially the only place on Lincoln Avenue of this size that, uh, height bonus would be allowed. As I alluded to, it also is based on the size of the site. It has to be of, of fairly significant site, both in width and also in size, and it meets that criteria as well. Uh, the last criteria for adopting a height bonus is, does it meet the affordable housing requirement? And in this case, I believe it was Jeff that mentioned that, um, when it was approved, the affordable housing in lieu fee required was a, uh, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. At that time, uh, that was bumped up voluntarily by the applicant to five hundred thousand. Nowadays, with a more, uh, higher affordable housing in lieu fee that we provide in a larger building, instead of it being, uh, a little bit less than one affordable housing unit, now it's a little bit more than one of affordable housing unit, this project is required to pay. Now the affordable housing fee is, um, closer to, uh, into the, into the four hundred thousand dollars. And so it, or in this case, excuse me, I think it's actually, yeah, I think it's in the four hundred thousand. I apologize. Maybe it's five hundred thousand. So now the, uh, applicant is actually bumping it up to six hundred thousand, voluntarily bumping it up. So, uh, I, I believe if, if planning sees this, is the, again, there's the only economics that, that affect this, because we look at it based on findings, would be, did the economics of the affordable housing fee, did it, did it, did, was it met? And in this case, it was met and it was added beyond. I think, uh, there, the affordable housing fee represents somewhere close to sixty-two percent more than what their affordable housing requirement, uh, in lieu fee is required for this project. So that's about all of that, that planning can provide as far as, uh, does economics have any play in determining whether this, uh, height bonus should be, uh, granted by the planning commission.
Right. Thank you, Steve. And again, keep in mind that the line of questioning here was less about the height bonus and more about addressing the community concerns and ensuring that the applicant is able to speak to those concerns.
And Steve, I just want to confirm this. This is a recommendation to go to the council, correct?
This is a recommendation for approval. What will happen is this approval will, will be, uh, be a valid approval. It just, it cannot, uh, the city cannot issue any building permits for it until city council adopts ordinance amendment that would allow for a grandfathering of these projects that are kind of caught in the, in between stages where they, they, they've already gotten approval and in order to now to go backward or go forward and meet all the new adoption doc, the documents that we have, it would require, uh, redesign of their projects. So this is a way to grandfather those that are caught in the middle, to allow them to, uh, be held to the standards that they originally were held to when they were approved, or in this case also, uh, when they were deemed complete, rather than to now go through the whole process all over again.
So this was deemed complete prior to the twenty forty plan, so that gets grandfathered in. What's the base? And, and you may not know, and if you don't know, it's totally fine. I'm gonna put you on the spot. What's the basis for the grandfathering in of a project, you know?
Uh, the basis is, is number one, whether you've been, uh, approved and haven't pulled your building permit yet. That would, uh, for instance, that would apply to the seven oh three Third Street project, if you can remember that. Um, and then the other one, uh, would be, uh, if it was deemed completed, that had it gone, uh, complete and it is through the process. In this case also, it happened to be, there were some delays on the staffing side of it, rather than the applicant side of it, that caused this thing. If not for those delays, this would have appeared for you at your last meeting, and we wouldn't even be talking about this.
Okay. So this was deemed complete prior to the twenty forty plan. Okay. Okay. And I think my two cents to the commission is, you know, we have the narrow charge as a planning commission in terms of what we look at, and that's pretty clear on this, what this density or this height bonus seeks to do. Everything else seems to align with it. I, I think what the commission, or Chair Samuzi highlighted, is really the community sentiment that, I would say, I'm on the fence with this project, but it meets that criteria. The way it was presented and the community concerned does not seem like it's been addressed by the applicant. So as a member of the community, that does concern me, because instead of seeming to address it, there's a frustration that came through that I totally respect, having worked on many projects in my career, but also hoping that you understand, as this works its way through, that community sentiment will be the neighbors you're gonna deal with. So I think what we're trying to figure out is, what are those issues that are percolating? Because part of our job is to make sure that's embedded through the public pop, process. I'd also just remind through the chair, if I could, and the staff, to be mindful about the Q and A with the applicant. I think it's great insight that they're providing, but I do not want to risk reopening public comment, because we're adding new information that the public would have the right to speak on. So I would just encourage the commission, we should kind of keep this amongst ourselves, provide the applicant this feedback to help them understand how to process this, and really kind of focus in on our charge as a planning commission. I think the economic is, the economic issues are a really interesting conversation. Personally, I love them, but let's just kind of keep mindful of our charge as we finish digesting those issues. Steve, if, if I'm. Um, the day here, I wasn't clear from your answer.
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Haveman, uh, you cut out there. Could you please ask that one more time, please?
Sure, sure. I, I wasn't clear from, from your, your answer. Is our decision here final, or is this, we're making a recommendation to the city council, correct?
No, this, this decision would be final. You are not a representing, you are not a recommending body, you will be deciding body. It's just that this decision, whether it's approved or denied, would, uh, be subject to the city council, essentially doing their part by providing an opportunity for grandfathering in of certain projects that have meet certain criteria.
Okay, understood, understood. Uh, so part of my raising all of the economics is that I thought we were making a recommendation to the city council, and I thought that was important information for them to have in terms of making a decision.
I, I also think like, if I can add something, um, again, is that, you know, there is community opposition. Um, but as we know with other projects, there's a lot of time to rallying. So I don't know if that, we just have a lot of opposition on paper and calling in. I don't know if that opposition is representative of the entire population of San Rafael. Um, just throwing that out there as something for us to remember. Um, I would hate for us to like, I, I know we're, we're grappling with this, um, but I also think I would hate to have the energy of, um, some of the things we're grappling with, you know, write this project off, um, or write off the recommendations in the greater context, because we are really just, should be focusing on, um, on those two points, correct?
Yeah. Uh, so I think from, from my perspective, you know, I'm, I'm in support of the project. I think that it's, I think it is worthwhile to, you know, again, you know, coming from a finance background myself, I think it's worthwhile to, um, kind of identify and highlight some of those questions and be able to answer them, um, in, in the face of the community. Like, like I said, from my perspective, this is not a, these are not meant to, I, identify or uncover derogatory components of the project. They're more to, you know, be able to highlight for the community. And again, this is for the benefit of the applicants, to be able to have on record, addressing these specific concerns and demonstrating that they have a, they have a grasp on that. I agree with you that community opposition is always gonna be there. I mean, if you're a call Northgate, I mean, there are always gonna be people that are gonna complain for whatever reason. But I also think it's important that, um, applicants that are coming in, being part of the community, can skillfully speak to those. They may not satisfy every, every naysayer, but being able to answer some, some fairly straightforward questions around economic impact, I think is kind of an important part of, of, of showing that face that they can present to the community. Not so much for us, but again, to have that on the record. So again, that's kind of where I'm coming from, from that. So are there an additional comments or discussion points?
Um, I would just highlight, I think it's interesting that the twenty forty plan, this project would be greatly designed. It really wasn't discussed as to whether the project would be able to proceed. I think as a planning commission, we have to be pers, you know, a bit respectful that that plan is changing what the site is. And if it's gonna get grandfathered in, respecting that we're using the appropriate entitlement at the time, giving the applicant the benefit of that doubt, but also making it clear for the record that this may not align. And with, under the twenty forty plan, this may not be the spirit of what the council is looking for. So although we can have that impacted now, I think we have to appreciate that there's a discrepancy in the two. And so I appreciate Steve highlighting and kind of, you know, falling on the sword and saying, hey, this was grandfathered in, we can't hold that against them. But I think the applicant should be aware, that may impact that public sentiment. The public may be looking at a very robust twenty forty plan that we just went through, and this may not align with some of those. So just kind of calling that out. I'm getting close to probably feeling like I'd be willing to make a motion, uh, on the resolution for a vote. I don't know if anybody has any amendments. I don't have any, but that's where I'm getting, unless folks want to continue to deliberate.
Okay, that's fair, Commissioner Rokato. Any, any additional comments? Because I think we should get into then sort of the language of the resolution. Are there any potential amendments that, that anyone would have to this? Okay, I'm, I'm hearing none. So on that.
Question, this is gonna go back to the DRB strictly as courtesy, right?
Yes, that, that would be for final review. I think they, on a consent item, they would just want to see how this turned out.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't go through sort of a, they're coming back there and then coming back here. Okay.
No.
Okay, good.
All right. So are we in a good place to start entertaining a motion?
Yeah, call for the question.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. That's presented in the staff report.
Commissioner Saudi, I'll second that motion.
All right. Any, any discussion on this particular motion? Okay, shall we jump into roll call?
Yes. Um, Commissioner Harris is absent. Commissioner Haveman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Uh, begrudgingly, yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Privatali?
No.
And Chair Samuzi?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, great. Thank you applicants.
Sorry, to staff, is there, uh, an appeal process on this?
Yes, it is, um, appealable to city council. And Steve, if you know the particulars, I promise I will have that read and memorized and learned by our next meeting.
Yes, so, uh, the appeal period is five working days. So, uh, it will, the appeal period would close next Tuesday night at five P M. So if any resident, uh, cares to appeal this decision, please submit your request for appeal, identifying or outlining your points of appeal, please, with the appeal fee of three hundred and fifty dollars. And you'll be going, submitting that down to the city clerk's office. That's, that's who will take the appeal, and it would be appealed to the city council. Once again, that would close a week from today, five working days. So it would be Tuesday at five P M, next Tuesday.
Thank you, and sorry for putting you on the spot. Attorney hat. Thank you, and sorry for putting you on the spot. Attorney hat.
Yeah, no, no. Good to know.
It's all good though, it's necessary. All right, next we'll move into the director's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, the director's report, I have some items that, when before council, I guess that would be on October 4th. And one was that the city council accepted 17 pages of comments on the San Rafael Transit Center draft DIR. And the big picture items were that the DIR relies on incorrect or outdated assumptions regarding ridership, references to general plan 2020 versus general plan 2040, and that the range of alternatives were not adequate. And that in some cases, the DIR emits analysis and disclosure of certain impacts, such as vibration-related impacts, impacts on historic resources, and traffic-related impacts. The meeting was not about selecting a citing option, but focused on DIR comments. And the council emphasized the need to recirculate the DIR, so we'll see if that occurs. The next item is that Caltrans will be starting the next phase, the Grand Street Bridge Project. Enclosures are expected on the San Rafael off-ramp the weekend of October 22nd. So starting October 22nd, which is a Friday at 10:00 PM, through Monday, October 25th at 5:00 AM. That off-ramp will be closed, so plan your weekend accordingly. And then finally, this may have come up previously, but the Housing Element Community Meeting, we're kicking off the new round of the Housing Element. And I think Vice Chair Privatalli, you're on the subcommittee, so you may have an update for us as well. But we're expecting the first community meeting at the end of October, and it's still scheduled for October 27th. And notices will go out soon. And I guess, related to that, I'm happy to announce that we are currently fully staffed in our new housing division. So we have Jacob Noonan on board, who's our new housing manager, as well as Alexis Kepenian, forgive me, I probably have her name wrong, her last name, who is our housing analyst. So we're super excited to start moving some of those projects forward, including that, looking into moving forward, finally, the urgency ADU ordinance and other things will start picking up. So, super exciting. And that's all I have for the chair's report.
Thanks. Awesome, Leslie. All right, so do any PC members have any communication? And if so, now's the time to shine.
I've got a quick one.
I just wanted to say it was a tough one, and I'm glad that we are able to create a good debate.
Agreed. I have just a quick one that relates to the housing element. I just wanted folks to know that the Othering and Belonging Conference, which is the institute at UC Berkeley that does a lot of research on housing and unlocking housing for low-income and minority communities, is happening this Monday and Tuesday remotely. And it's Monday afternoon, and then all dates Tuesday. So I have scheduled myself some PTO to attend. I think it's, it's not free. It's like $100 or something like that for people who are, you know, joining as individuals. But yeah, I'm hoping to learn a lot and hoping to share a lot with the planning commission and also the steering committee for the housing element.
What's it called again?
The institute is called Othering and Belonging. Yeah, and it's, yeah, and it's, as I mentioned, this conference is part of UC Berkeley. There's also a tremendous amount of material online. There are like five or six studies that have been done over the course of the last few years that made, as I mentioned, great recommendations about how to increase diversity in housing and integrate communities.
Thanks. Well, looking forward to the update from that. This looks really interesting. I'm just on their website right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Looking forward to updates.
Leslie, are there going to be any updates on SB9 and sort of that lot split, ADU, whatever the heck that's supposed to be?
Yeah, you know, if you request it, then the answer is yes. You ask, we'll deliver. No, no, no. No, it will be. I mean, as you all know, SB9 passed, and it will allow duplexes where there's a single family, as well as a division of said lots that are at least 5,000 square feet and have a second duplex. So it is something that we're going to, maybe not by the next staff meeting, but we need to have it well digested for us as planners at the front counter to be able to process, you know, building permits that come in and understand. I know there's limits on historic resources. I'm not sure if there's, you know, limits on creek setbacks or how that works. So, so yes, once we know, we will share.
This would be really interesting.
Yes.
Just as a quick question, do we have a sense of, you know, what potential impact that might have on additional projects coming in in San Rafael? Maybe it's early days.
Yeah, I can only make my own guess, which is that I think it will be, well, in terms of the planning commission, since those will be by right, you will not see them. In terms of arena numbers, hopefully we'll assist our arena numbers. I would guess, there was actually a report by the Turner Center that kind of given evaluation of how impactful it might be that I can share with you, if you don't want to look it up. That they're saying it may not be as impactful. I don't think it will be as impactful as the ADU ordinance is, but I do think that some folks will take advantage of it, so.
Yeah.
But I can share you the Turner Center report sent you that link.
Well, so I'm seeing from the Turner Center reports, it says estimated that just 5.4% of the state's current single-family lots have the potential to be developed under SB9. So I'm wondering, do we have a sense of like what that represents in San Rafael?
Not yet. Yeah, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be interesting. I'm really interested in that space.
Yeah.
I just want to back up to Commissioner Saudi's point. Good job tonight. I think that was a great discussion. I think it's in the charge. I think it was public comment. I just thought that was right on. It was tense, but I think it's what the public needed to hear. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And am I the only one who's ingrained into my kids, they're going to take care of me till I die? Eighteen years. I've taken eighteen years. All I need is eighteen years. Assisted carefully. Here you go. Come here. Take care of me.
Well, you have to line up on us, because you have a lot of students who probably would do it too.
No. I started young. Eighteen years for eighteen years. That's what I go with. I want to be in person again. I want to be in person.
When I take my mom out to lunch, I always remind my kids, like, oh, this is what we do with our parents when they get older. You're going to take me out to lunch.
Yeah, well, yes.
I'm going to have to remember that one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh goodness. All right. Anything else, everybody?
No.
I just have, I just have one more thing, just since people are interested in the housing stuff. There was a great article called Where the Suburbs End in the New York Times recently, that is basically a case study on adding ADUs and, you know, doing all sorts of like divisions of lots down in San Diego. So it's a great, it's a great read. It has some real good insights from local residents down there. So it might be interesting. It's called, as I mentioned, Where the Suburbs End, and it came out, I think just a few days ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Okay.
Check that out. A lot of good reading.
Call it, end of meeting.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody.